Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Busino?
Here.
Trustee Krasinski?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. We have approval of the agenda items. Ms. Posey, we have no additions this evening?
None at this time.
Any subtractions? No? Okay. Anyone else have any additions or deletions?
Madam Chair, if I may, don't you, these add-ons, don't you have to do those?
They were in the revised agenda.
Okay, I'm just, want to make sure.
Yep.
Wouldn't want to violate the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The approval of the bills, there are two bill runs as usual. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no problems with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries also. The meeting minutes from August the fourteenth are before you. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, if there's none, I would move to approve the minutes as received.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Support.
Whoa.
Sorry, sorry, microphone, sorry. Sorry, Roger, didn't mean to support your motion out loudly, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski, seconded by Mr. Busino. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board. If you wish an item removed from the consent, please indicate so at this time. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments, and this is on agenda items only. If you wish to address the board, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Jim Gellius, item nine. We had a meeting today, a staff meeting with department heads and three board members to go over some of the concerns that people had on our ethics ordinance. As we left the meeting, I had requested it be postponed, the vote tonight be postponed, because I feel there's still some items that need to be addressed. I'm certain that everybody here concerned, we want to have the best item in place, whatever that shakes out to be, and it's not ready for a vote today, in my opinion, as a chairman. We have too much, the committee has too much respect for the employees not to understand or take in their concerns and try to address them and, you know, put it in its proper place. This is a logistical issue, it's not the board, it's not employees, it's not anything, it's just that the ordinance was posted last Friday. I've said before from the podium that I wanted enough time for people to look at it, be it resident or employees. I don't feel that took place. And I think with the board members that have been involved in these meetings, as well as the attorney, I think we're very, very close. I just don't think it's ready for a vote tonight. And I would respectfully ask the board to consider postponing it for sometime next month. I know it's been a long road, but we got eighteen months into this, a few more weeks isn't going to hurt anything, and I'd rather get it right than rush something through that we're going to have to address later on. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Agenda item only. Very well, then we will move on to unfinished business, and that would be the ethics ordinance. Is there a motion to postpone this, and for how long?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we postpone it. We did a timeline today, we're hoping to have it ready by the last meeting in September.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth of September, hopefully.
Motion, motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to postpone the ethics ordinance till the second meeting in September.
Madam Chair, since there's been a motion to support, that opens up for discussion based on the rules. I just got a question about the meeting that happened today. Last Friday morning, I met with our treasurer, I met with Nancy Nevers, I met with Tom Sokol, I met with Jim Gellius, I met with Rich Marley, I met with our attorney. And as we left that meeting, and I will trust Mr. Gellius' assessment that this needs to be postponed once again, but as I left that meeting, at that point, there was a promise made that there was going to be a final draft released to the board later that day, which it was. There was an email from Ms. Goodhue that, to the whole board, that said, "The committee, legal counsel, Nancy, and I, as well as Tim, met this morning and finalized the ordinance." Finalized the ordinance. And then it goes on to say, "Roger, this can be added as backup for the item on agenda now." Anybody can FOIA this. So, if there were concerns from any group, I get that, but apparently there was a meeting today. So, we get a, we get an email to the board on Friday saying there was going to be a vote. Apparently, there was a meeting today. I have talked to members of this board, at least one member, that said they got no notification that there was going to be a meeting today. It's my understanding that after meeting with some employees this week, that employees had some current concerns, and I understand that, and I respect that. But why this board was not notified that there was going to be a meeting today? Couple of members of this board got notified. It is the same thing I mentioned a few weeks ago, that there was a meeting at a trustee's house that nobody knew about. Then today, there was a meeting called. We can only have three members at a meeting. I get that, and I respect that, and I would stay away from that. But for the entire board not to be notified that there were some concerns with the final draft from an employee group, and there was a meeting called this morning, I'm just asking, you know, again, having that meeting's okay. Postponing this is okay, but keeping that from members of the board? I know at least one member of this board who agrees with me, that they had no idea that meeting was taking place this morning. So, why couldn't there be, okay, there's been contact because of a department head meeting on Monday, that there's been some concerns, and so maybe we should address those concerns and postpone it? I found this out probably four-ten today, and then I started making some phone calls. And why can't the board get the same email that we got on Friday that said the ordinance was going to be finalized? Again, I respect you, Mr. Gellius, I respect you, the president of the committee that we all appointed. Why wasn't every member of this board notified that there was a meeting today, and then that meeting resulted in postponement? I mean, am I missing something here as a voting member of this board? And to be quite honest, on a personal level, I think everybody up here, and everybody in the crowd, knows I've been pushing this ethics ordinance since day one. I was so excited on Friday, when I got this email from my treasurer saying there was a finalized ordinance. So, I started announcing there was going to be a vote today, like I did back in June. And I got no notification that there was going to be a meeting today. Zero. So, can anybody up here answer that for me? I mean, again, outside of the employee groups, brought it forward, I respect the employees too, highly. Why was I just not even notified that, "Hey, Tim, there's going to be a last-minute meeting, we've got to change some things." I know you think we're voting on it. I know when you walked out of the meeting last Friday, and you were promised that later on that day, which happened, there was going to be emails sent with the final ordinance draft, why didn't anybody contact me? And just say, "Mr. Busino, I don't know if this is going to move forward tonight." And I can tell you, there's at least one other board member up here that had no idea this was happening too.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On Monday, when we had our staff meeting, the staff did have some questions.
Get that.
And I asked them to contact Mr. Gellius to get answers to those questions.
Yep.
They decided to have a meeting today, and it was for department heads. So, that would include myself, Mrs. Dunn, and Ms. Posey. Mrs. Dunn could not attend, so I happened to be talking to Nancy, and because she had been sitting in on the meetings, I asked her if she was able to attend, and she was. I know Roger was not contacted, neither was Kathy, as well as yourself. It was for the department heads originally, and the members of the committee, so that they could get their questions answered. And at that time, it was talked over and decided to postpone it on the advice of the committee.
So, in the same fashion that you sent this email after we met last Friday, you couldn't send an email saying that I think, I think, I think that the president of the committee, the Ethics Committee, is going to recommend a postponement tonight? You couldn't do that?
I apologize for not doing so.
Madam Chair, if I may, I can understand that Mr. Busino is upset. We all wanted to move forward with this. This has been an important document. Mr. Assorti has spent hours on it. Mr. Gellius and the committee have spent hours and hours on it. And we wanted, the employees were probably not, I mean, I'm sure they were aware that we were working on it, but I think their concern was that because it is going to impact them, they wanted input on it. And perhaps that was our fault, as we were going through this, and not realizing that we should have included them, or a member of the employees to say, "Hey, you want to sit in on this?" We didn't think about that. It was, it was not done on purpose. But when we were all there and talked about certain things, the concern seemed important enough, and Mr. Gellius, as chair of the committee, felt that we want to come up with a document that is perfect, as perfect as it can be. And then we also had to have rules, and we had to have procedures that go along with it. So, to make it a complete package, the decision was to delay it. So, we, this has been a learning experience. We're not perfect, but we did the best we could. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, just want to respond to that comment, too. I think the last two, three, four meetings, our HR general counsel has sat in on those meetings. So, gosh, so maybe the last two months, at some point, could someone have said, or, you know, I think we had the perfect person to say, "Let's get the employees in on this ethics ordinance." Let's, let's get their opinion. Not at three o'clock the day that we're going to vote on it. We've had our HR general counsel there, and I've been to three of the last four meetings, I think. I never heard once, "Should we contact the employee groups?" I've never heard that. So, whose responsibility is that? So, that would have been valuable input.
Anyone else? There is a motion and a support. Motion by Ms. Goodhue, supported by Ms. Nevers, to postpone this ethics ordinance till the twenty-fifth of September.
Madam Chair, can we get a roll call vote in that?
Pardon?
Can we get a roll call vote?
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
No.
Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That resolution, or that motion is adopted.
No. Motion passed.
Then the motion carries. Under new business, we have facilities and grounds, a request to purchase new vehicles and sell the present vehicles. Mr. Gellius?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to request authorization to purchase new township vehicles for various departments. One for the assessing department, two for the building department, one for facilities and grounds, and one for the parks and recreation department. All vehicles will be purchased from Signature Ford, who has provided pricing received through the state of Michigan and the Macomb County bids. The total purchase price for all of the vehicles will be $135,925. With the request to purchase the new vehicles, I'm also seeking authorization to sell four existing vehicles throughout the listed departments. The vehicles will either be sold through a sealed bid process or sold as directed by the purchasing specialist. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Gellius, you had indicated that through the, when you're selling the vehicles, you anticipate recouping majority of the expense for these new vehicles, correct?
Correct. So, four of the, I'm sorry, three of the, out of the five vehicles are relatively new. And what I have found is that the price that we're paying for the vehicles through the bid is very good, and we can come pretty close to selling the vehicles for what we're paying for them, and having them in the fleet for three years, keeping under the mileage, being that the mileage is so low for these particular departments, and the warranty would still be in effect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, on the recommendation of the buildings and grounds group, make a motion to approve the purchase of vehicles and also selling of them.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Second.
Supported by Ms. Posey, to purchase the new vehicles and put the older ones up for sale. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay?
Nay.
That motion carries. Next, we have a request to purchase a JCB track loader. Mr. Gellius?
Thank you. Again, Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I am here tonight to request authorization to purchase a JCB compact track loader in the amount of $79,891.84 from AIS Construction Equipment. Pricing was received through the state of Michigan MyDeal program. This machine will be utilized throughout the township, and will also be extremely useful at the new properties the township has recently acquired. In addition to the loading and unloading of various bulk materials, it has the ability of stacking, grading, leveling, and digging, which are all essential to the various projects. We participate in demonstrations of three different track loaders, with JVC being the most versatile and the model of choice. Currently, AIS has a demo model with approximately eighty hours on the unit, which has been discounted an additional $1,660 below the MyDeal pricing, and would come with a full warranty. I'm again available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may? Mr. Gellius, I just wanted to know, was this, did you budget for this, in this budget cycle?
Yes.
Since it's such a large purchase? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Are there any motions in this matter?
Madam Chair, on a recommendation of the buildings and ground person, I recommend authorization to purchase this loader.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay?
Nay.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Under human resources, we have authorization to extend offer of employment of a senior appraiser. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the board, on August fourteenth, this board authorized the Human Resources Department to post the position as senior appraiser pursuant to the MAPE-MTPEA collective bargaining agreement. That posted, that position was posted the following day, and we immediately received an internal application for promotion, which is described in the collective bargaining agreement and permitted. With that, I met with the assessor and reviewed the application, who is enthusiastic about the promotion of this individual. And after having that discussion, both the assessor and I are asking for a motion to approve the promotion of Kim Patterson to senior appraiser pursuant to the agreement with MAPE.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve the promotion of Kimberly Patterson to senior appraiser.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Krasinski, to extend the offer of employment for senior appraiser as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is a request to initiate recruitment for the property appraiser position that was just vacated by that promotion. Mr. Sartor?
Madam Chair, members of the board, as indicated, the promotion of Ms. Patterson to senior appraiser status leaves open an opening for the, for the appraiser position. After discussing the matter with the, with the assessor, both he and I are asking that the position be filled. So, with that, I'd ask for a motion to authorize the Human Resources Department to initiate the recruitment process for a property appraiser pursuant to the terms of the agreement with MAPE.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move to authorize the Human Resources Department to initiate the recruitment process for a property appraiser.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue, to approve this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Now, we have authorization to extend offers of employment in the fire department. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the board, as this board is well aware, the township is consistently recruiting for position of auxiliary recruit and paid-on-call firefighters. Our department has recently received thirteen applications for those positions. Candidates passing the written test were moved on to an agility test, which was held on August thirteenth. The six candidates that passed the agility testing were interviewed by the selection committee, which is the normal committee of the supervisor, clerk, treasurer, chief Phillips, and deputy chief Monroe. And with that, they're recommending the hire of Michael, and I apologize on the names, Actis, Ryan Randlett, Amy Rodemeyer, Alin Sudia, and Benjamin Vakon. And so with that, I ask for a motion approving those individuals for hire upon contingent, and contingent on successful completion of post-offer pre-hire examinations.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, on a recommendation of Human Resources, I move to hire the individuals as mentioned.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Support.
Ordered by Ms. Nevers to approve this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a request to adopt a resolution to include, I'm sorry, to increase wages for the building board of appeals. Mr. Assorti again.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this board previously set by resolution certain payments for members of boards and commissions. After speaking with Mr. Maples, we had some discussion on the appropriate amount of payment for the building board of appeals. And both Mr. Maples and I agree that, based on the technical requirements and the skill required of the professionals involved in this board, the amount of $15 per hour worked was a little bit of a deterrent as far as making sure we had appropriate members. So, with that, Mr. Maples did some research into adjoining communities and other areas to look at what was an appropriate pay, and with that, asked that the matter be, that the pay for those individuals be increased to $50 per attended meeting. So, with that, I'd ask for a motion on the resolution approving the building board of appeals be paid $50 per attended meeting.
Thank you. Any questions?
I will make a motion to adopt the attached resolution increasing the wage for members of the building board of appeals to $50 per attended meeting.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by?
Ms. Nevers.
Yep.
Ms. Nevers, thank you, to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
No.
Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next, we have general counsel request for a resolution approving Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant application increase. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the board, back in March, the township board, by resolution, authorized submission of an MNRTF grant application based on information that was supplied by the planning director. The, during that, that process requires, in part, two appraisals done of the property. The appraisals came back significantly higher than the purchase agreement that the township entered into with the conservancy for the, for the purchase. If you, if you, for purposes of reminding you, the way that the matter was structured is, the conservancy purchases the property on an agreement with us, with the township, to purchase the property with the conservancy. And as long as that property maintains in the conservancy, we're able to grant, we're applied, we're able to apply for the grant in the process. So, during that process, when the appraisals became known to us, and the amounts, it became pretty clear that there was a substantial amount of money available more that the township could ask for in the grant application. So, with that, the township's been approached by Six Rivers Conservancy, requesting that we increase the grant application. And because of that, there will, if we increase the grant, the grant application amount, they can, there's obvious things that can be done, purchase the property, there's more money involved. And they're willing to pick up a bigger portion of the matching funds available. We're currently just over $300,000 with our obligation to purchase the property that's capped at $1.2 million. If all the things go correctly, we're looking at reducing that down to about $157,000. So, this is a two-part process. The first part is a request to adopt a resolution amending the grant application request to $1.8 million. I want to be clear that that's, you should do that only if you also plan on doing the addendum to the purchase agreement. And with that, there would be no further obligation for the township to, one, pay more for the property than that, which they've already committed, or come up with matching funds for more than, for which they've already committed. So, the first part of that is the resolution increasing the grant application.
I would, I would indicate that Mr. Chris Bunch is here from the Six Rivers Conservancy. If you have any questions, I would direct them to him. Thank you, Mr. Bunch, for coming this evening.
Oh, absolutely.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to express my concerns with the increase in the grant. Originally, when the board met and discussed this property, it was appraised by, with our appraising, our assessing department at the $1.2 million. I've reviewed the appraisals that came in at one point. I've reviewed the appraisals that came in at one point million and two million, and the extraordinary assumption was that the public water and sewer are available to the subject site to support the highest and best use. Anything, to the contrary, could have an impact on the value. I did meet with our engineer and asked if there was any intentions of ever taking water and sewer, bringing it out there. He had indicated that it wouldn't be for forty-plus years if that were to happen, and/or it would be at millions of dollars to the township to do that. I've also met with our assessor and asked him his thoughts on the one point eight million dollar appraisal, and he had indicated that if he had to take it to the tax tribunal, it'd be thrown out because it wasn't compared apples to apples with the other properties. So I have concerns with the one point eight million dollar grant. I understand that it's being utilized or suggested that's to a benefit of the township. But I just, when I look at the numbers and I calculate them, I clearly see a true benefit to the property owner more than anything. That's just my concerns with that.
Sure. So I appreciate and recognize those concerns, and I know we've talked about those at some length throughout this process. And I guess there are two important things. First, that there actually is water to the property. So the, there's not sewer, but there is water right there. So that's, that's accessible. But regardless of that, the, the trust fund process requires that they review and make a determination about the validity of the appraisals. So they are going through that process right now. And if they agree that the property is worth more than one point two million, and they're willing to fund more than one point two million, then we have an opportunity to reduce the township's cost out of pocket to acquire this property. So the point in taking this approach is that if we don't ask, we don't get. We have until October first to amend the application to increase the value and to allow them their ability to respond to it. So my suggestion to you is that we increase the value. The way we've structured this is so that you won't pay any more than one point two million, no matter what. If it had to come out of your pocket, if you didn't get the grant and you had to cash us out, you would still pay the original contract amount. If, if they don't approve any more than one point two million, but they approve that, you won't have to pay any more than the match that you have committed to, which is three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. If they approve some amount greater than one point two million dollars, and we're able to bring more back for the property, then we will reduce your in-kind match requirement accordingly. So there is an opportunity here for benefit for all the parties. But we, you know, unless, unless we try, it won't happen.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution amending the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen approved MNRTF grant application request to one million eight hundred thousand dollars without any further obligation to the township.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Krasinski to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Bustanelle?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Clerk Posey, no. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. Now we have the next item, which is the purchase agreement addendum.
So Madam Chair, members of the board, as indicated, we do have a purchase agreement with Six Rivers Land Conservancy, and the addendum would be, in fact, that, an addendum to the agreement. There is no further obligation for any additional funds on behalf of the township. What it, what it does permit on that one-page addendum that's to the back of the agreement is allow the reduction, up to a substantial reduction, down to a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars of the ma, of the matching funds required by the township. So Mr. Bunch, I think, can, can answer any questions that you have relative to the grid that's on the back and how that process works and how the reduction of the grant, of the matching funds would work if you have questions for him. But other than that, it, it asks for an, a motion to authorize the supervisor to execute the proposed addendum to the purchase agreement with Six Rivers Land Conservancy.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Bunch?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I, I hope the math is relatively clear on the addendum, and it simply says that, you know, if they authorize one point eight million dollars, then we would absorb all of your original local match commitment, the three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, because we can do that. And then your, you would only make up the difference between the new match commitment and what your original piece was, which is what gets you down to one fifty seven or whatever the number is. So if they approve less than that, you know, that amount goes down a little bit. But if, even if they approve only one point three million, your, your match requirement will go down, it'll only go down by five or six thousand dollars, but that's still money that you'll, that you'll keep.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted to refer, reference this to Tom. In the agreement, number seven is naming rights, and it says the party shall ensure that the owner's name will be incorporated into the name improvement features or structures of the park. I just don't want the board to be locked into that based on the guidelines that we have for naming of the parks.
That's in the addendum.
That was removed, I believe.
Yeah, that, that, that's an old version of the, it's a previous version, that, that the naming rights were removed. So those don't exist.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't locked into something that we couldn't honor.
Nope.
The signed agreement that we already have for the purchase of the property, that provision is removed.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I had.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, hearing no others, I'd authorize supervisor to execute the attached proposed addendum to purchase agreement with Six Rivers.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Support by Ms. Goodhue to appro, to approve the purchase agreement addendum. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
That motion carries.
Who's a nay?
Next, we have clerk's office request for a public hearing date for Industrial Development District for Twenty-three Mile Road Industrial. Now, this is just for setting a date, and the date chosen was September eleventh.
Madam Chair, on a recommendation for a public hearing on nine eleven for Industrial Development District Twenty-three, on Twenty-three Mile.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to set September eleventh as the public hearing date. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And then the next one is the same request, only it's for a different development. This would be for V and G Industrial, and this date is also September eleventh. Someone make a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for Industrial Development District for V and G Industrial on nine eleven.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Support by Ms. Goodhue to set September eleventh as the public hearing date. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is a request for Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting videos be placed on the township website.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to support that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have. Question. Ms. Posey, on this, on this particular issue, you're the one that brought this up.
Correct.
Was there any discussion with the supervisor or the, or the treasurer on this, that you think you elected, work on this together? Or was this something you just came up with?
Uh, no, I, I talked to the broadcast media director.
No, no, that's not what I asked you.
No. I, it was an idea that I had, and I discussed it with the department head.
So you went, you didn't go to the supervisor and discuss it with her, since it's underneath her auspices, her umbrella? That's the reason why I'm asking you?
No.
So you just do stuff just like that?
Mr. Krasinski.
I'm just asking you a question.
I'm gonna ask you a question. Do you think that the treasurer and the supervisor include me in all their meetings and ideas that they have?
I have no idea. I'm not here.
Hey, well, so we all have ideas, and we bring them to the board. I don't need permission to bring something to the board. They can vote on it.
I'm not saying you, I don't, I'm not saying you can't.
I know you're not.
What I'm saying, I'm, what I'm s-
Because I can.
What I'm at, saying to you, Ms. Posey.
I've answered your question.
What I'm saying to you, Ms. Posey.
I've answered your question.
If I may, I know you have. I'm not done. What I'm asking is that to include the treasurer and the supervisor on some stuff. It's, it's only right.
I would appreciate that.
Listen, I'm not here.
State your respect, Mr. Krasinski.
I'm not here with you guys all day.
And stop talking like you are.
Are there any motions?
Ms. Nevers made the motion I'll support.
Motion by Ms. Nevers, supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a water and sewer request. The first one is for final balancing contract modification number one for AEW project number Mr. Wangland?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you asking for contract modification number one. This is the project on Twenty-three Mile Road, the water main project, I should say, on Twenty-three Mile Road. It went roughly from North Avenue east to almost the township limits. This will be an increase to this contract of nine point six-nine percent in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents. And in your packet are the, are the reasons, are the items that led to this increase. I'm recommending approval of this. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wangland?
Madam Chair, if I may, on the recommendation of the superintendent, move to make, to approve the motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the final balancing contract as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is on the same project, but it's a request to approve final pay estimate number three.
That's correct. Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. This will be final pay cert. number three. This will be payable to FDM Contracting. Water and Sewer and Engineering have reviewed this. We are recommending approval tonight in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, on a recommendation of Water and Sewer, move to approve the project at two-two-three-seven-ninety-four-point-thirty-eight.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the final pay estimate number three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Next is an engineering request for a variance from engineering standards for five-six-six-two-seven Burke Dale Drive. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the board, earlier this year, the property owner visited my department as well as the Water and Sewer Department regarding some work that they had proposed in their backyard, basically regrading their backyard and building some additional storm sewer across the back of the property to adjust the grades between the two property, properties. There's a side yard behind his piece as well as the backyard of the property owner's piece. At that time, we had discussed what the township would require with regard to materials and what the process would be. Engineering approval, permits through the Water and Sewer Department, as well, it affects the county drain. There's a county drain that this particular new system would tie into. So shortly thereafter, I was alerted by the Macomb County Office of Public Works that work had happened to that, their drain. They had provided me with pictures that indicated that the storm sewer that we had discussed at the counter had been installed without anybody's knowledge. So I had contacted the building department, code enforcement, went out there to stop the work from happening and direct the property owner to come in and talk to us about how we would now fix this issue. I'd indicated the property owner that approval would still be required. He has since provided a plan to the township indicating the materials that are listed here, the six-inch PVC pipe, as well as the two-foot diameter plastic catch basin, which do not meet our standards. I cannot approve this because it doesn't meet our standard. He's asking essentially for an after-the-fact variance from the township board because he's installed it already. I wouldn't have approved this had he come in ahead of time, but now he's asking, since it's installed, can he get a variance from the township board? He has worked things out with the drain office. They've essentially accepted it. There was technically no work done to their structure, so they were okay with it. It's really, it now, it basically falls on the township. Are we going to accept these materials or, or aren't we? So an engineering variance does come to the township board for consideration. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, Mr. Van Tiflin, this gentleman is the owner or the contractor?
That is the property.
I'm not a property owner, Frank Agrusa. I live there.
You are the property owner?
Yes.
And you went ahead and did this on your own without any approvals?
Well, I had, I'd been in contact. I asked everybody what needed to be done.
Did you pull a permit?
I pulled the permit from the Macomb County Road Commission.
No. Did you pull a permit here?
No, I didn't.
Why?
I was kind of in the timeframe. My backyard is kind of unusable, and honestly, I was having an engagement party for my daughter, and I was on the timeline that I needed to get it done, and that was my whole reason for getting it started. I've lived there over four years now, and I haven't been able to use my backyard. I've always been wanting to do something on it, but I finally had a reason to do it, and it was on a time crunch.
So you've been thinking about doing this for four years, but you didn't have time to come in and get a permit?
No, no. I'd been thinking about it, but I finally put something together. And when Mr. Van Tiflin asked me to get engineering on it, we got engineering, and everything works properly with the materials that I used. I did do it before the permit. I do not have a problem with paying for a permit, but I did it.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, you did, were advised by engineering on what materials needed to be installed, correct?
We discussed it at the counter.
In detail, correct?
In detail, yes.
And you went ahead and chose different materials?
We discussed, we discussed the size of the materials, but then also he said, bring in engineering. And I had our engineer design it, and it works properly with those materials.
So you decided to just go against what our engineer had recommended?
I did.
Okay. That's all I need.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mr. Van Tiflin, Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Van Tiflin, if we deny this request, what happens then?
Well, I suppose he has two choices, probably. One is to take out what was, well, take, basically take out what was constructed and build it according to the township standard. I assume, and I'll defer to legal counsel, I assume that he has the ability to file something with the court system and see how, how that goes.
Madam Chair, if I may, with Mr. Van Tiflin, if we were to approve this variance, then that would open the door for others. It would set precedence to possibly potentially do the same thing without following your recommendation and guidelines.
That is my concern, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, and that's the guidance of the township of what they want in there, just to follow up to Ms. Posey.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
One more. How, how much money would it cost to make this right, according to our standards?
I, I don't have that number. I would have to look at it closer. You know, that, it's a small project, so it's hard to estimate off the top of your head. You'd have to take a look at it and see, you know, what would all be involved in it.
Would he have to dig up what's there?
Yes.
And replace it according to the township standard?
You'd have to reconnect to the existing manhole that's on his property at a lower elevation, remove all the pipe material that's been installed, and install new pipe.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is there a timeframe that he would need to have that done by then?
I, I don't think so. I mean, the board, you know, I suppose could, you know, come up with something, but it's really more of a time-of-year situation. So if the board turned it down, then I'm assuming that he would want to get all this done before this, you know, the snow flies, you know, by November.
Okay. Anyone else?
Could I, could I just add something? This is, basically, it's, it's a drain in my backyard that's handling my backyard and This is, basically, it's, it's a drain in my backyard that's handling my backyard and my neighbor's side yard. The standards that are put in there are for like, you know, the whole city sewers. I mean, I'm, I'm considering this like a private drain. I'm not calling it a French drain, but it kind of does the same purpose as a French drain. And I did attach to existing pipes that were in the manhole and I didn't have to put any new holes in there. That's probably why I picked that size pipe because there were already holes there and I didn't have to make any new holes into the sewer. That's why I moved forward with this.
Okay, then I have one more question for you.
Okay.
Which I ask right off the get go. Are you a contractor?
I am a contractor, yeah.
With water, sewer, drains?
No, I'm a, I'm a builder.
What kind of contractor are you, sir?
A home builder, residential home builder. I build homes.
Madam Chair, if I may, do a follow up. If you're a home builder, you know we have criteria for you building your homes. It's the same thing for the pipe that go in the ground. That's why we have that. You may feel that it, it's not up to your standard, but it's a standard that this township has adopted and it's something that we want. And I fully understand what you're talking about, but still, we do have the right to put that pipe in the ground the way it should be done.
I understand.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If there are no more questions, are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to deny this variance.
Is there support? Motion by Mr. Kryzmanski to deny.
I'll support that.
Supported by Mrs. Nevers. Would you call the roll on this, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Kryzmanski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busenow?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. I'm sorry, your request is denied. Next, we have permission to execute cost sharing agreement for design and construction costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for 21 mile resurfacing project Hayes to Garfield. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes ma'am, Chairperson Members of the Board. Recently, the Macomb County Department of Roads has provided us with a cost sharing agreement for the resurfacing of 21 mile road between Hayes and Garfield. This is a federally funded project, so 80% of the funds are being provided by the federal government. And then the county and the township would split the local match 50/50. So the township's portion would be $200,937.00. We are recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin?
Madam Chair, on the recommendation of engineering, I move to go ahead and do the 21 mile resurfacing at the quoted price of 200.937.
Motion by Mr. Kryzmanski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to execute the cost sharing agreement for design and construction costs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the next one is a request to sign a quit claim deed for 18550 23 mile road for the Macomb County Department of Roads 23 mile widening project. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes ma'am, Chairperson Members of the Board. Currently, the Macomb County Department of Roads is in the process of acquiring all the right of way that is necessary to widen 23 mile road from Fairchild all the way over to Romeo Plank. The township does have a piece of property that the county has identified that they need some additional right of way from. This is actually a sanitary sewer pump station property. Township built a sewer pump station on that site maybe 15 years ago. This probably should have been taken care of at that point, but with all of the activity that goes with building a pump station, it was inadvertently forgotten about. So they are trying to clean this up at this point and are asking the township to sign the deed to dedicate the full right of way. We've reviewed this and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions on this issue?
Madam Chair, on the recommendation of engineering, a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the quick claim deed for 18,550 23 mile road.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Kryzmanski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to sign the quit claim deed for 18550 23 mile. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Madam Chair, one other question for Jim. Jim, was there any update on card and 23, on card and widening in Chappell Valley Schools in that meeting that was this afternoon at 3:30?
I asked the county to call me back this afternoon. They must have gotten busy with other things, but I did, I did not hear anything back from them. So we'll, we'll follow up with them and see if we can find out what happened with that.
Okay. So we don't, we have no idea then, do we?
Not right now, no.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Next, we have a request to authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement agreements for the planning consultant. I believe we finally have a document that encompasses both the equipment that he has. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, the, we've exchanged, through the supervisor, exchanged two different agreements. One with Mr. Maher and his, his company relative to the use of a township computer and access to computer, or excuse me, access to township files so that he can help us with what's needed.
I can't hear. Okay, sorry.
And in addition to that, a separate agreement that he has supplied. As noted in your package, the agreement we got from Mr. Maher, I think from his end inadvertently identified us as, as a charter township and that's, that's going to be corrected. So the final version would have that corrected.
Any questions? This has been kicked around two, three times.
Madam Chair, if there's no, no questions, I move on the, to execute the agreement?
Motion by Mr. Kryzmanski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement for the planning consultant. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the Building Department has a request to amend the Building Department fee schedule. Mr. May, polls.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. The Building Department is requesting approval to amend the fee schedule to reflect the increase in wages for the members of the Building Board of Appeals. The new hearing fee will increase from $150 for a residential and a $250 commercial hearing to a flat fee of $300 for either residential or commercial. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maples?
Mr. Maples, if you want mine, could you explain the hearing process for the Board, the Building Board of Appeals?
The Building Board of Appeals is a five-member panel and it's for construction variances. The building code gives me some latitude for interpretation, but if a builder wants to use a different material or have a different way of constructing something which is out of the norm, it would go through the Building Board of Appeals. For an example, on September 10th, we're going to have one for the new public library. They have some, a variance they're requesting for an energy code that I'm not able to approve. So it's going to be going to them. So they, the members are architects, engineers and professionals and they discuss it and see if they meet the intent of the code and that it is as good or better suggestion that they make.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if there's no, no further discussion, I move to approve the, amend the Building Department fee schedule as presented.
Motion by Mr. Kryzmanski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to amend the fee schedule for the Building Department as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the Board.
Now we come to public comments and this is on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, state your name and remember you have a three minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Julianne Kuzmano. I, my address is 16188 Jenny Drive. I've been waiting two weeks to come back up here. I cannot believe the way Mr. Kryzmanski spoke to Mr. Busenow last week, two weeks ago, when you called him a liar. It was disrespectful and anybody who watched the video, all said even online that they were horrified by it. Mrs. Posey, thank you for everything you do and for always looking into things. It's interesting how you were, went above and beyond on many topics today and you weren't questioned by Mr. Kryzmanski, but then he went at you disrespectfully and you're a bully. And you know what, when we come up here as residents, and there's not very many of us, we are representing so many people and when we're speaking, we want you guys to hear us and you just keep voting the same way. The three people that aren't voting, Mrs. Smith, Ms. Posey and Mr. Busenow, I've worked 11 hour shift today. I still came here tonight. This is really upsetting and you guys have got to start stepping up and listening to the public. We come up here to speak, not because we want to say the same verbiage every single time, we want you guys to hear us and the people that do, thank you.
Good evening, John Parkinson. Address is on file. First, I want to thank the Macomb Township Water and Sewer Department, the guys and gals over there for taking my calls, answering their questions and being polite and respectful. I'm still waiting for calls back from Mr. Sorty's office and the, in all fairness to Supervisor Dunn, we talked this evening before the meeting, so I thank you. Guard with jealous attention the public liberty. Suspect everyone who approaches that jewel. Unfortunately, nothing will preserve it but downright force. Whenever you give up that force, you are ruined. The great object is that every man be armed. Everyone who is able might have a gun. That's a quote from Patrick Henry. Last Board of Trustees meeting, I was the subject of the conversation during public comments, non-agenda items. So I'd like to first convey some credentials. I'm a US citizen and a Macomb Township resident. I'm a former firefighter in another city and I'm a member of Michigan Open Carry Incorporated. I'm an NRA range safety, certified range safety officer, soon to be a firearms instructor through the USS SCA. I want to assure you, the board and the many citizens here tonight, that my firearm will remain holstered unless that need arises to use it. Furthermore, I do not appreciate either Roger Kryzmanski's, both senior and junior, assuming that I was used upon or brought here under false pretenses. I personally had met Trustee Busenow for the first time on July 24th, 2019, at the first meeting I attended. It's the first time I ever met the man. I also like to address that knowing a little of Trustee Busenow's character, he would not make up such an egregious story without merit. If you replay the video from August 14th, 2019, at the 156 mark and beyond, you will hear Trustee Kryzmanski say he called Trustee Busenow back into the meeting room after closed session had expired. Thus, you still had a quorum. You will also hear that Trustee Kryzmanski say he spoke with the sheriff to find out who I was. My name had already been stated on the record earlier during public comments. Did my firearm upset this man who him himself stated he supports? If that were truth, then there would be no need for me to be identified. Did Trustee Kryzmanski violate the Open Meetings Act? I do want to commend Mr. Sorty for defending the truth and the Second Amendment as well as to what is legal and putting stop to something that should have never been an issue anyway. I want to end with this. The laws that forbid the carrying of arms are laws of such nature that disarm only those who are neither inclined nor determined to commit crimes. Such laws make things worse for the assaulted and better for the assailants. They serve rather to encourage than prevent homicides. For an unarmed man may be attacked with greater confidence than an armed man. That was Thomas Jefferson. Thank you and God bless America.
Anyone else?
Frank Kuzmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I'm going to be covering the same topic. The Second Amendment, the right to bear arms is under constant attack, both overtly and subtly, by elected officials and many others, some who identify themselves as Republicans. It was reported that Trustee Roger Kryzmanski instructed a Macomb County Sheriff's Deputy, who stands to the right of this podium, to check out a member of the audience who was an open carrying, open carrying a firearm. Did that mean stop him and question him? Did that mean run him on the lean network? What did it mean? The only thing that that gentleman did was open carry his firearm, which is his completely legal right to do, under the US Constitution and under our state's Declaration of Rights, Section 6, Bearing of Arms. Every person has a right to keep and bear arms for the defense of himself and the state. That is the Constitution that we're sworn as elected officials to uphold. I have a CPL and I've had one continuously since 2001. Not because I want to be tough or intimidating, but on July 7th, 2001, I was robbed at gunpoint. Anyone who's had a gun pointed at them knows the feeling. You are very polite, very cordial and cooperative. As a matter of fact, there were so many armed robberies in Detroit during that period in the Eastern Market that the Detroit police officers who, who came about two hours after it was initially reported, acted very blasé about the entire incident. In any event, citizens have a right to protect and defend themselves and their property, period. Local government, including this board, cannot regulate guns and that is preempted by state law at MCL 123.1102. I won't read it. If you're interested in reading it, you can bear out that it says what I indicated. I've carried my concealed handgun in this chamber. Do I always? Well, I'm not going to disclose that because it would defeat the purpose of my CPL. Just know that I'm fully licensed to do so and if and when I choose to do so, I will. So, Trustee Kryzmanski, are you going to ask the deputy to check Kuzmano out? I hope not. While it would have no effect on me, I can see that for my work, that many citizens would be intimidated by armed police officers questioning them. It would have a chilling effect. Finally, I want to mention my father-in-law, George Kesa. George Kesa was, he joined the Army in the fight against the Japanese after Pearl Harbor. He saw action on D-Day, fought in World War II, fought in Korea, served in the Coast Guard, the CBs in the Korean War. Not once did George Kesa ever trot out his military service to cover something that he did or said that was wrong in the view or opinion of other people. So, Mr. Kryzmanski, we thank you for your service to this country, but it has nothing to do with whether or not you asked a deputy to check out a citizen who was an open carry person before this board. And by implication, you exhibited your disdain for open carry citizens. Thanks, thank you again for your service to the country, but it has nothing to do with what your statements you made that day and whether or not they were appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, then we will move on to trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, just got a couple of things. I want to thank the speakers tonight. Mrs. Kuzmano, thank you. I know we don't see eye to eye on everything all the time, but thank you for defending my character. Thank you very much. Mr. Parkinson, I agree with you that the Water and Sewer Department is a awesome department to talk to. Jerry will, I mean, I think Gerald will, will drive two miles quickly to, to take my phone call and, and make sure I have every question answered for residents. So I completely agree with you with your compliments to that department. Mr. Kuzmano, again, thank you for always coming up and, and, you know, talking about the law. That's something I do. I do teach government law on a daily basis, but what I wanted, I do want to talk a little bit tonight about some inconsistencies that I see on this board. A couple meetings ago, I kind of stood alone. ago, I kind of stood alone, to be honest, about questioning some work that was done at a resident's home, a former trustee's home, with some photos that I have timestamped a couple days before permits were pulled. And I did compliment the employees of this township for stepping up and making sure those permits were correct. Tonight, a resident kind of got lectured about doing work, and, and I supported that. You should follow permits. I'll be, I'll be consistent, too. I don't think it was right that, that a driveway work started before permits were pulled. And I don't think it was right tonight that a resident did that, and that's why I voted against that variance. But that, when I brought up the permits about not being pulled about a former trustee's work, I got no support up here. And tonight, there were many people talking to this resident. So that is the first inconsistency that I saw tonight. The second inconsistency is about transparency. Twice now, and again, and I, I appreciate the treasurer's apology because I, I have sat in meetings with you and, and I do think you're, you're trying to move forward with, with the Ethics Committee. I really do. Along with Ms. Nevers, but twice now, there were meetings held outside of the knowledge of the board. And I've pointed that out, but I didn't get support on it either. But I heard somebody get lectured tonight for not telling the supervisor about actually something that is actually improving transparency, and that's putting video clips online. So I think we got to be consistent up here. We can't pick and choose our battles. And I try to be consistent. And if I'm not, I guarantee residents are, are talking to me and calling me out online with emails. But again, there were two times tonight that we were very inconsistent and it, it, we got to get better at that going forward. The residents deserve better.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, just a couple of comments. Want everyone in the audience to have a great weekend. Be safe out there. And also the opening for MSU this weekend on Friday. So go green. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well, then we'll move on to treasurer's comments.
September is coming very quickly and September the 14th is the due date for the summer taxes. Because that date falls on Saturday, we will accept payments the next business day as, as this not being late. Penalties will go on then, that Tuesday afterwards. Thank you.
Clerk's comments?
Nothing this evening.
Very well, then the supervisor's comments. There will be a free paper shredding and electronics recycling event. It will be October 5th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And this is Macomb Township in conjunction with GFL, and they are the ones that are hosting it. I did speak to our rep from GFL today and he didn't think there would be any problem with the construction of the new fire hall. And then I talked to the fire chief just before the meeting started and he indicates that everything over at the senior site is in minor chaos and probably will be for some time. So I will be in touch with the GFL tomorrow and tell them that it will be held here. The other thing I wanted to inform the board and the viewing audience is that the Act 345 pension system for the fire department consists of a five-member board. And this week, a board member resigned because he has moved out of the township. So the township board needs to fill this position before November 20th of 2019. This appointee would be filling the remainder of the term, which would end on November 20th of 2020. This board oversees the full-time firefighters' pension accounts. To be eligible, the candidate must be a resident, be available for a four-year term, and be able to attend quarterly meetings during business hours. Applications are available on the Macomb Township website. And the deadline for the applications are 4:30 p.m. on September 20th. That's all I have, and that concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kuzminsky. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and we are adjourned.